Is the Town of Taos has to go to the Board of Finance to make that transfer over. But the, uh, the way the Town of Taos elected officials of the Senate is with a reversionary clause. Yesterday, well, Mr. Trujillo is going to be working on the RFP for the,
Program?
For the program. I did sit down with Ms. Vahill and Mr. Freskis yesterday. Because we do have $195,000 in legislative grants for the engineering and architectural services to expand and remodel the building that's coming over from the town. So I want to put that into motion right away and get working on the three-year thing. At least that's in motion. I believe it's Senator Luhan's office is, uh, is taking us to the next level of congressionally-directed spending for the detox and that's coming in at 2.2 million. So the 195 would be for, to design the building. The addition and the congressionally-directed spending money would be for the actual construction. Hopefully that all times out within three years as we know the money for the courthouse is taking us 18 months. And well, not quite 18 months, a little over 14 months to get where we are. And I'll touch on that in a little bit. But that's kind of my plan of attacking the three-year reversionary clause from the town for the detox building is to get moving on that.
Do we have an legislative appropriation of 195, the grant to give?
We don't have that to work.
And Brad, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Quick clarification. It is Congresswoman Teresa Fernandez-Fernandez who put forward the detox in the congressionally designated spending.
Actually, both of them.
Both of them did?
Yeah, but you're right. But I think you're right. The 2.2 is from the Congresswoman's office and there's not a dollar amount on the senators.
Excellent. Well, good to know our federal delegation is helping with this. Thank you.
Was an appraisal of the building attached to the resolution that the Town of Taos passed?
No, sir. They have an old appraisal and it's something that me and Mr. Trujillo touched on it. The towns probably need to get an appraisal to take it to the Board of Finance.
I remember when we transferred something to someone. I thought it was a fire apparatus or it was something. And DFA requires, let me, I'll try to remember what it is specifically, but I know that DFA is, requires an appraisal to be included and I don't believe there was one.
Right. We have an old appraisal that the town did in 2016, but obviously they're going to have to update it and yeah, the town's going to have to go to Board of Finance. I did ask Mr. Trujillo to attend the joint meeting next week to, for these type of questions that may come up.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Trujillo, the dollar amount, well, I know on the lease amount, but we're not doing a lease. Is it, anything of value of $25,000 and above has to go to State Board of Finance?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, yeah, there is a dollar amount. It's either 20 or $25,000. We're far in excess of that. I did speak with the city attorney yesterday and he's of the opinion that he doesn't need to go to the Board of Finance and he can just get DFA to, to approve it, given that they're a municipality. There are different rules that apply to counties and municipalities. We would definitely have to get a Board of Finance approval. In any case, what I asked him to do is get that in writing from DFA, that that's the only process he needs to do. So that we can be assured that if there's a problem in the future, that it's addressed now, that we can avoid problems in the future with the transfer. So there's a possibility that they don't have to go to Board of Finance. I'm having the city attorney research that because that's his opinion. And we'll have that report to you by Thursday. If that's the case, we'll be able to speed things up. But I do, I do agree with Commissioner Fambro, even DFA approval requires appraisal. There may be an exception to that government to government. City Attorney is also looking into that. I'm also going to look into that. We'll have answers for you by Thursday.
That's great. We all know that the community is very anxious as well as we are to get that detox going, but there's such a process. So I think having this topic in the town and county joint meeting and talking about it will certainly shed some light for the public. So they can see that, you know, the delays are because of the processes and the rules and, you know, town and county operate differently in many ways. So we just want to make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's before we get there, but we can't move fast enough in my, and well, I guess I can say that for all of us, right? We just can't move fast enough. But thank you for working on it. Okay.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
We're still then two, three years in opening a detox realistically with construction. So we need to keep that in mind. What I would like to see with opioid litigation, when we get that money, I'm still waiting to see what the dollar amount is. We could put some of that money into sending people to 30-day treatments. In the meantime, for an interim solution to this problem, because this is not gonna, that detox center is not going to open anytime soon if we're going to do major reconstruction.
We're going to do an addition to the building. So it is our intent to issue an RFP, have responded, respond to the RFP, that they'll have the knowledge that, that there will be construction going on next to the building and we'll use the property footprint and we may have to go up, but anywhere we can use the property footprint and stay within the setbacks, we're gonna, we'll go ahead and do that. And we may have to go up, but we'll let the architects and decide that as well and.
So, yeah, thanks Chair. So Mr. Hamio, is then what you're saying that, that in the existing building, services could be provided before the two or three-year construction timeline? So it might not be quite as far out as two to three years?
Right. We want to provide existing services and at the same time, go ahead and, and work on the design and then do, put that out to bed and the construction part of it.
Invite us back when that happens because we've worked really hard to try to get this open.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's good. And just if, Mr. Hamio, if you could find out the amount we will get for the opioid lawsuit, when that comes in, because this could be used as a stopgap measure to send people to treatment.
And we exchanged emails with attorneys last, even actually, even up to Friday night and, and there's not a dollar amount on opioid litigation yet. We don't know what our share is.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the joint meeting?
No, just looking forward to. I do, on the recycling, I think we need to publish that we're looking for people to be on the board. We can't appoint other members of the public unless we know they want to be on it. So if you could talk about that during your meeting today?
I believe that is the intent. I think it is to put it out for the public and see who applies. Because I envision that it will be an application or maybe not an application, but a letter of interest as, you know, the same process we go through with any of our boards is people step up, but we have to let them know that it's available, that the position is there. So, but thank you.
No, and I'll jump to the bottom of my report is, uh, we did have our, one of our planning commissioners resign and that's Mr. Ortega. He submitted his letter of resignation. And unfortunately, the land use regulations didn't, does not provide a replacement process on, on the ordinance. And it's something that I want to speak with Mr. Trujillo on and Ms. Romero, because even before this, I wanted to do, redo that version, that section of the land use regulations to put a more formal process beyond letters of interest, more of an application process like you do see for some of the state committees where you fill out an application and have more of a vetting process. So it's something that I want, like Mr. Trujillo to look at. And then we have to have a replacement process because it's not going to be, I'm sure this hasn't been the first time and it's probably not going to be the last time that we have a planning commissioner resign. So we do need to look at that.
Madam Chair? In the meantime, it's just the Board of Adjustment that fills in.
Right, but our Board of Adjustment is minus, one of those individuals is made up with a planning commission. So, so yeah, we only have one member of the Board of Adjustment that could potentially fill in.
And, and Mr. Manager, I'm still going to advocate that we do a total rewrite of the land use regs, given zoning issues with housing, restrictions on housing, this issue. And I'm, I'm suggesting we hire a contractor, a professional planner to rewrite our 150-page document that just keeps bigger, getting bigger and bigger and more complicated. Thank you.
I agree. The land use regulations, it's a total rewrite.
And Madam Chair, to piggyback on what Commissioner O'Donnell is saying, if we were to undertake that rewrite, I would love to see it done through a lens of sustainability, because I don't believe that that was, it doesn't seem like that was part of the conversation last time around.
Right. No, I, I agree. Okay. So mother, somewhat bad news is we've presented, Mr. Silva and myself in the past, there's basically two timber bridge contractors in New Mexico area. There's one based out of Albuquerque and Southern Colorado. Mr. Silva has been in conversations with them. They did provide us a price quote back and that came in at approximately $1.1 million. And, and as the commission may recall, we have $485,000 from a New Mexico Department of Transportation grant, which gives us a gap of approximately $615,000. Internally, we're calling that $700,000, that the gap exists. We would like to see if we could use 399 funds to fill that gap. Well, we're going to meet on that this afternoon as well, but just want to alert the commission of where we stand. What's critical here is we're coming into the window that, the window that, for construction. So if we're going to do something, we need to do it right away.
Yes, Vice Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Brent and Jason, too. This is, I know this is, this is hard. And I appreciate the window of construction, given the, it's a nesting ground there, right?
Flycatcher.
Yeah. The Federal Infrastructure Act has a big emphasis on bridges. And not that that helps us in any kind of timely way, but do we have any plans for going after some of that money? Since bridges are kind of a big part of that act?
We, our plan was to go after the money that you're thinking about for the permanent bridge. So, because we're under, well, DOT didn't give us a timeline on this, but we want to go after the permanent bridge money. And that's what Mr. Silva and Mr. Sanchez are working on. And I think that's, Mr. Silva told me, let's do it. Give me a date, but it's due in a couple of weeks.
That makes sense. Thank you.
And so that's what we're going after is on the permanent money.
Madam Chair, here's what I think we should do is see if DOT will let us use the 485 to build a new bridge and leave the bridge as is. It's still, it's functional and it was shored up. People can use it, drive over it. And we just go, we, we put that 485 into a new bridge and then in addition, the, the deadline for the federal money. And I think that's something we need to check with DOT on this appropriation, if we're able to move it over and just leave the historic bridge as it is, get the new bridge done. That saves us $700,000 from the 399, which I just think that those timber companies, I mean, I know everything's gone up, but it makes more sense to me to see if we could roll that money over to a new bridge.
We, we did, we didn't touch on that yesterday. One of the things that Mr. Silva mentioned to me, and I know this is in the back of me, is that the part of the reason for shoring up the existing bridge is so we can take the concrete, the cement trucks to the other side to pour the, the concrete, the concrete pillars that are going to need it on that other side for, to get the span. So I know there is an existing weight limit and the, and now that's after it's shored up. I know we can take propane trucks across and we can take water tenders across, but I, I don't know, Mr. Silva, if you remember the weight limit on there now, but that was part of the reasons for us fixing it up. Because we did have, not quite this conversation, but we did talk about this with, with Ms. Vahill and Mr. Freskis yesterday.
Can we get small cement trucks going over?
And, and just for the record, if I, for these young ladies here, this bridge that we're talking about is what we refer to the, I'm sorry, we refer to as the Pilar Bridge, Aguas Calientes. You know, we're, the bridge crossing over to the, from one side to the other in Pilar. This is the bridge we're referring to. Yes.
And Vice Chair Vahill, Vice Chair Brush, Commissioner Fambro, Commissioner O'Donnell, thank you for allowing me to speak. Like County Manager alluded to, we have an issue to, to build the, the bridge that will last to be 100 years plus. We need to enforce this bridge and this is a critical component for us to do the construction traffic, to get the construction traffic across the road, create the buttments and pillars to support this. So I agree with what Commissioner O'Donnell has mentioned, but the issue for a lot of these that, the reason for the increases is it's easy to have a civil engineer and an instructor to design something on paper, but to actually construct it through a waterway that actually is real ground that's flowing water on a constant basis. Not like we can just turn it off and say, let's redirect this. So the increases for this budget on the engineered estimate was really lean and I saw that coming in, but now that this bridge contractor came into it, the method of work through the waterway, he's going to have to shore up certain areas to dry it out, to excavate it, pour concrete in between, let the concrete cure and maximum concrete is about 30 days, depending on the admixures that are utilized to support the structure and support the PSI that's needed to support the, the girders and everything that holds this bridge for a water tanker, everything that goes through this. And for the construction traffic for the new bridge. So that was a lean amount. That was almost close to about $300,000 discrepancy from what the engineered estimate of working through this waterway, a method of waterway. So their vision of designing it, but their method of the contractor actually performing the work is way different. The other one is the treated timber cost increase. That went through the roof and there's not very many timber bridge. Everything's made from structural steel right now or concrete. So to, to support this bridge, that was another issue that was a considerable increase. The environmental concerns of removing the decking, which means there's an actual chip seal in asphalt that's there. So to take that off without getting it any oil, it's an oil base in aggregate of this asphalt, for them to have the remediation to take this off is another environmental concern of not letting it go into the real ground. And there having to be contingent of all Army Corps of Engineers and environmental studies of how it's going to affect the habitat within that, that area. So in that one, the next thing, and this is the kicker, where they didn't really factor this in, is the traffic control. We have 30 residents that live on the other side of the road. So through this process of this management, we have to perform or they have to perform the work, but then create a path at five o'clock to allow these people to get back. So every day you're performing something and every day you're putting something back. So all this criteria, the $495,000, and now it's an increase. I did, I gave Brent some misleading numbers, but it would be an increase to the budget for $660,522. So, but it's desperately needed and as everybody knows, especially with the three commissioners that have been standing here for eight years, this has been going on since 2012 and us trying to identify funding for design and funding for the bridge. We need to move forward with this. It's what our community needs and what the community of the residents of this area deserves. And right now it's, it's, we can't push this any further. So.
Is there any way to go back to where we got the funding? And I mean, obviously this is something that's happening all over, right? Whatever quotes were received and by the time you get the work done, everything has gone up. So we can't go back and say, hey, you know, we need some additional funding. I mean, this.
The next cycle, but not now.
I mean, we could try, but we'd miss the cycle of getting any construction done. So still my recommendation is to find the money within the 399 or the reserves and get it done that way. Then, to, when the state of New Mexico paid for this engineering report and the estimate that we're talking to 2020 and that number was finalized in early part of 2021. So things have changed or even 2020 that we got that engineer's estimate from the state and we based our grant request based on what their engineer, which is also our engineer, had gave us.
And the new bridge, are we, I mean, do we have some good numbers? Because once again, if we, I think it went, what, from eight million to, am I right?
You're thinking about, you're thinking about blueberry.
Oh, blueberry. I'm sorry. You're right.
But we're still, the engineer's estimating 11 million. Now it's a point in time last year. So we could easily be up to 13 million now or if not more.
Yes. It would be somewhat close to, as County Manager mentioned, eight million was, or seven million was the original estimate for the Aguas Calientes Bridge, the, the new bridge. Over the, that was pre-pandemic. Right now it's, it's lingering around 11 million. But, you know, with the rising cost of fuel, you know, at one point these, I would say it could increase by another 15 to 20%. One thing that is on there is we have some of the BIL, the bipartisan legislation that, that we could go after, which is, that's where I think in the best interest of Taos County for us to put this first initiative forward and then hope that, you know, the contingency of that, the funding of this large project can come to us once that grant proposal is completed in September. So.
Okay. So that will be before us for approvals so that we can move forward? Is that correct? Or, or we just?
In the context of you approving the budget, yeah.
Okay, got it. So you're going to put it in the budget so we can approve it?
And then, Madam Chair, the deadline for this federal funding is August 23rd or have they extended it? My question is there, is it an outright grant, this federal infrastructure money, or is it a reimbursable?
This one would be 100% funded and the grant that we're looking at, I believe, is September 9th. Unless it's been moved up, but because I saw some documentation yesterday, the County Manager, Admio, shared with me showing that there was some, showing that a deadline or at least a submission was August 8th, but I am still going back to my original notifications of September 9th though.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioners, on that topic? No. Go ahead, Mr. Hamio.
The next thing I would like to talk about is, was called the Quality of Life Grant. Mr. Silva and Ms. Montoya attended the webinar. Commissioners O'Donnell and Brush listened in as well. There was a fire alarm at DFA, so they were doing the webinar until the fire alarm broke and they were getting close to the Q and A portion of it. So there's approximately $45 million available for communities statewide to plan, design, furnish, equip and construct recreational projects. Last week, the commission and myself to receive an email from Dr. Catherine Cordova, she would like to submit a grant on behalf of the El Prado Community Center. Me and Ms. Cordova have exchanged emails over the last few days. It's still her intent after the webinar to apply for the funding. That would be, she would be filling out the paperwork, grant application as Taos County. I haven't had a chance to talk to Ms. Montoya, but I did offer up Ms. Montoya for that support with Ms. Cordova. And so there's that. Village of Questa, I don't believe, the mayor of Questa asked me if the county would partner with them. I asked them to put it in writing. The Village of Questa may be submitting a request to the county to partner in a grant request to construct a rodeo arena on village property that's outside the municipal limits. So if you're going north, there's these, what they call the livestock corrals. So we sent them near there. If you know where Moises Sanchez or Norman Sanchez lives up in that area. We've now received a request from the village. So those are the two items that I know that potentially we may be applying for. I believe the Town of Taos would be applying for, for the Mon Sanchez Park for the same funding to, to work on that as well as Taos Soil and Water Conservation has reached out to me and I spoke to Mr. Vahill yesterday regarding another grant opportunity for Filimon Sanchez Park. And he's also been in conversations with Mr. Gonzalez from the Town of Taos as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Are we not going to apply for artificial turf at Filimon Sanchez?
If the, if, that may be transferred to the town in the next couple of weeks. So the town would be being the ones, it's up to this body to approve the transfer. But if we approve the transfer in the next, not the, the next regular commission meeting, then it'd be on the town to, to apply for that grant.
That grant is due on the, I'm getting the dates. It's the 23rd of August it's due. So I, I guess I don't really see paperwork done, deeds transferred from Filimon to the town by August 23rd. That's why I was hoping we'd apply for the quality of life with the artificial turf. And so what are we doing? Are we going to apply for this or not? I mean, because that timeline isn't going to work to get, give it to the town and it's going to be awkward if the town tries to apply and has to justify that we'll get the, we'll get the property. I, you know, I, I was really hoping we'd get Filimon Sanchez Park fixed and this Quality of Life Grant is perfect. So are you moving forward on it or not? And then Ms. Montoya had sent me an email about it's not on our ICIP. We'd have to make amendment. That is a point scoring on the grant that it's going to just be points. And I was hoping we could do an amendment to the ICIP and get that on there. What are we doing? Because you, you did not discuss that. You only mentioned Ms. Dr. Cordova's request.
Well, we know what Dr. Cordova's request is. She has a feasibility study for the work that can be done in the community center. So she has something that she can point to with the cost figures. So we don't have that on Filimon Sanchez Park. Me and Mr. Silva did talk about it this morning and we would have to hire somebody to write the grant for us that has the expertise on parks. There's a, not that we would use them. Well, there's, I shouldn't disqualify them by using their name. There's a, not that we would use them, well, there's, I shouldn't disqualify them by using their name. So there is a couple of people out there that have a CES contract that does this, does football fields. There's only a couple in the state as well that do this type of, of work. So we'd have to turn around and.
So what I'm hearing is no, because I thought Ms. Montoya was capable of writing that grant. We didn't. So what I'm hearing is this is not going to happen. Those softball fields are not going to get fixed. And I just thought that was a perfect opportunity to go after the quality of life. But you are telling us no right now is what I'm hearing.
I'm not telling you no. I'm telling you, Ms. Montoya does not have a document that she could use to write a grant. We would have to pay somebody to give us the information or pay somebody to, to produce the grant. We, off the top of our heads, uh, when we met with the softball league, we were thinking, what, $2 million? It's 2.5 and that's us just brainstorming. One day with the softball league guys, and they came over and that was our intent was to go for this, uh, to go for any funding that, when it became available, the town of Taos, when their original conversations were that they would fix the park, give it to them as is and they would fix the park. If the Commission were, I'm happy to put a, a item on the agenda directing staff to go after this grant, but just know that we're going to have to hire somebody to, to, to do it.
I just had thought that we'd already gotten quotes about the cost of the park and we know the two companies and we can lean on the company that built the Angel Fire field. So, but when I, I'm hearing no, okay, that's what I'm hearing, even though you, you're saying maybe. And I'm just disappointed because how long is it going to take to give it to the town? It's not going to happen in a couple of weeks. So they're going to miss out on that grant too. So it sounds like we're just going to go with Dr. Cordova's.
Actually, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Manager, that was kind of my question too. Are, can we, can we still have the opportunity to agree to put grants in for other things? I mean, is there, I had to drop off of the, the webinar at some point. I wasn't sure if there's a limit on what a political subdivision can submit. And do we have the capacity or could we find the capacity to submit other things? I know Dr. Cordova already has, I mean, she's applied for this, this particular project to upgrade that community center before. So she's very well organized and prepared and has the building or the architectural study ready to go. But back to my question is like, is there still time and space and, and appetite for potentially applying for, for other projects as well?
There's an appetite and there's time and space for like playground equipment. I don't know what the proper name for a shade structure is. I want to say a tchau, but I don't know the politically correct word for it is. But there is that for small items like that, that we can go and pull off the shelf and get price quotes fairly easy. We, we can do that. There's a lot of great work that's happening at Oro Seco Community Center. And there's still something that we could probably do with that grassy area.
Uh, Madam Chair, again, it's a reimbursable grant. So we, as a county, would have to administer that grant. I, you know, it isn't given to nonprofits and they're not a political subdivision. So it's, it is, you know, if that's the wishes of the Commission, because it's not going to happen at Philly Mon. I, I really was hoping I'd get more support from the other Commissioner who really wanted to see those softball fields fixed. But it sounds like we're just going to abandon that possibility. It, it, how difficult can it be to write this grant? It's not that difficult. It's a pretty simple grant from what my understanding. So I, I, I'm sorry, I just kind of see it, all these things you're saying is an excuse not to do it.
It's not an excuse. I'm protecting Ms. Montoya. She has a full schedule. And I, I know there's, she's having some, she's going through.
That's fine. I don't need, we don't need to know what, but the point is, how long have we asked to get a grant writer on board? How long has the Commission asked and it has not been done?
We've been trying and, and I have, I have asked several grant writers and I have, you can hit on my phone and you can see that I've asked individuals to submit proposals.
It's been really difficult to hire, so let's go on to the next, what else do we need? Thank you very much. Thank you for listening. We appreciate you being here. Okay, Mr. County Manager, is there anything else that you?
Yeah, two more items.
Okay.
Me and staff did hear what Commissioner O'Donnell did have to say. And we did contact local government division. And we did speak with Steve Lacy, our, our grants administrator. There is a process for a waiver for legislative grants and the CDBG grants. So we have the draft letters Ms. Montoya prepared. I just need a sign up where we don't have to cash front the projects. And so there is a process that we, that we've talked to DFA about and we will be sending those off to DFA. For the CDBG, it's a three-day turnaround. And with legislative grants, it's a five-day turnaround. Our legislative, our grant support to Mr. Lacy does also believe this would also apply to, should apply to DOT grants as well as, uh, anything coming out of, out of the state. So in the past, there would be a delay because we would have to produce a canceled check. And we would loan ourselves the money for a project, produce the canceled check. It has to clear the bank. Ms. Montoya would submit the canceled check to DFA for processing. So that could take up to four to six weeks before we'd see the reimbursement. So this way, Ms. Montoya would be able to just simply submit the invoice. So thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for pointing that out to us and we learned something new. Yesterday at 5:40, Ms. Montoya did receive an email from Congressman Teresa Ledger Fernandez's office on the 1.2 million. So we received the letter of invitation and the grant guidance on the 1.2 million for the historic county courthouse. I don't believe Ms. Montoya's had a chance to read that paperwork this morning and neither have I because she forwarded it to us this morning. So that's been one of the big questions that we've had is when's that money coming in? So we finally can review that paperwork and see what the process is. All right, so, uh, so this is where I was saying, since we submitted it, it's been close to maybe 14, 15 months, the initial application. So hopefully it, it's all timed out for us well with detox and we'll have the engineering, we'll be shovel ready by the time those funds come in on the federal side.
Great. Exciting. Yes.
Madam Chair, so what I'm hearing, the waivers will be used for the $18 million pipeline projects and the cap, the governor's $5 million for various projects? Is that, what are you, what are we going to ask the waivers for?
We're asking for all legislative grants and CDBG. So anything that has to do with the state of New Mexico, I'm not going to speak to DOT, but anything that Department of Finance and Administration administers, we're asking for those waivers.
Excellent. All right, but we are going to accept the 18 million from the governor on the pipeline projects?
Haven't had no further communication with them. So now that we have this, now I think we could proceed and we, like I mentioned to the Commission, I would want us to hire a project manager for it. I, I know, if you don't mind, Chair, I will share this. The Chair did ask one of our legislators for additional money to hire the project manager and, and they thought that maybe that was a possibility. That way it doesn't eat into the corpus of the, of the grant agreement.
Very good. And I'm sure Gas Company, New Mexico Gas Company would also be willing to help us with this project. Two projects, actually.
Okay, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Any questions for Mr. Haddam? No? Okay, so thank you, by the way. That's a lot, there's a lot going on. We appreciate everything Taos County is doing. Yes, Vice Chair?
I did have a couple of questions, just some status updates on where we are with the ARPA process, how close we are to getting the application out to the community for the community impact side and whether or not, and, and where we are with spending like the, the portion that we designated for internal uses. And then it would just love a, an update on like what, what our timeline is for finalizing the budget.
I should have mentioned the budget because I was going to mention. The Treasurer's Office did provide the final numbers to finance last night, not last night, yesterday morning. And so we have the beginning balances that Mr. Freskis has entered in yesterday. We're going to sit down with him this, sometime this morning, tomorrow. I mean, sometime this afternoon, this morning. We should hopefully get out of budget to you all by Thursday is what I'm pushing for, that they get that out. The things that need to, that I know still need to be worked on is, is the Excel spreadsheet of the 399 and the Excel spreadsheet of the, of the ARPA funding, of how that's going to work. I need time to give that to Mr. Freskis so he could input. Where we're stuck on the ARPA process is the grant application is ready to launch online. That's all, is how we procure Taos Community Foundation is what we're trying to work through. And so I'm hoping to get an answer today on that, how we work through Taos Community Foundation.
Thank you, Brent. And just a quick follow-up if I may, Madam Chair. Do we have a communications plan in place to get the word out? Or is, is Ms. Gonzalez working on that for us about like how to get the word out in the community that now the application's open?
Ms. Gonzalez would get the word out. This would be part of her scope. And then I know unofficially, everybody, I don't know if everybody, but unofficially, I know she's talked to a lot of the nonprofits that attended the stakeholder meeting to keep them updated.
Thank you.
And on the budget side, just a couple of, of things that I want to make sure we don't, there's not an oversight on the collection rate. I understand it's slightly down. And also our assessor did indicate that there was a, a large protest underway. And so I wanted to make sure we didn't, you know, forget to extract that, those numbers. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Harmil, for all your work. Please let us know when we can have the internal meeting on the clean and livable ordinance.
It's going to, it's going to be in August. Ms. Romero is gone part of this week, next week. So she asked for us not to schedule anything until she returns. Tomorrow afternoon, Commissioner Brush leaves and, and so we'll work around their schedules. And we'll, I do want to invite Punya to this first meeting because this will set up how we handle other input meetings, work studies in the future and treating it as a project and getting everybody's input. You know, he touched on it at one of the, one of our workshops with him, but I want to bring him in for this first session.
Great idea.
And Madam Chair, I, I don't know if we had asked our assessor to come back with a kind of updated maintenance plan. I, I don't know where that goes.
I, I can answer for the assessor. I know the Commission did ask her to come back when she made those changes.
Can we find out?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Need to schedule a meeting with her, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think we can move on now to, excuse me, let me put my glasses on. Commissioners Reports and Matters, new business to be considered a future Commission meeting. And I think we've kind of already, unless you want to add, I do, actually thinking, Madam Chair. My apologies to everybody, especially staff for, for adding. But I would love to see us have a conversation about real estate transfer tax to potentially take advantage of the highest value things, you know, transactions that are going on in our community, potentially to fund on an ongoing basis some affordable housing work. So that would have to, as I understand the process, that would have to ultimately be a ballot measure. And we have, thanks to Madam Clerk's good information, that we have maybe about another month in order to finalize something like that for the ballot because it's 75 days before Election Day that it has to be finalized. So, and I would just like put that out there too as an invitation is like, is there anything else that needs to be on the ballot related to, to, you know, items that have to come not just before us, but, and then, then in front of the public? So real estate high value, real estate transaction tax is something I would like to see us discuss in the next meeting or two.
Along those lines with the ballot measure, Chief Cordova is finalizing his numbers for the grocery receipts tax that he wants to implement for fire and EMS.
Madam Chair, could you have more clarification on what the ballot question would be for housing or?
The city of Santa Fe tried this in 2008 to put a small tax, a small percentage on the highest value real estate transactions. And then, as I understand it, and Mr. Treviso and Mr. Alteo could help us make sure that, that we're good. As I understand it, we could set the, the transaction amount, like it's only half a million or three quarters of a million and up. And it's only a tax on maybe the buying side. So if you're selling, you're not subject to that. And then, as I understand it, then we can direct that revenue to something like an affordable housing fund. It is not, you know, a brand new idea. It has happened in plenty of places. And it was actually the top recommendation in Monica Abeta's 2020 Affordable Housing Plan that she presented, not just to the county, but the town. And as far as I know, I don't think that that was ever picked up and, and run with. And I think that this year, since it is a pretty attention-getting election, not as much as 2020 was, but it's, you know, not, it's not 2021. It's, there's a lot of stuff on the ballot. I think this is an, an opportunity to potentially consider that as a way to, on an ongoing basis, fund some housing efforts. And if we, you know, got the message out and did a good job of communicating, people would understand that we're not just like trying to double tax them, that we're not hurting our local people. We're just having the, the people who can most afford it help out a little bit with our most probably pressing crisis.
Excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I think the timing is right. I, I know this has been a prior discussion. But, you know, I know we keep on talking about it, but I think we're at that point where we need to certainly move on it.
And thank you, Madam Chair. And as I understand it, and I, you know, having conversations with other counties and with our, our state rep, there is nothing in state statute that says we can't do this. But I also don't think that we can look to the state to eventually do it on their own because that's too big of a lift. But we, as I understand it, it could come before the Commission. We could vote to put it on the ballot and then it goes to the public to decide if it's the right move for our community.
Sounds great. Thank you. Okay, anything else to be considered? I think we've got a lot on the table, so we'll just leave it at that for now. Commissioners announcements? There's only one thing that I'd like to remind everyone. On July 30th, 100% community will unveil their mural and it will be an invite for the entire community to come out. for the entire community to come out. And, uh, it's a kickoff. And we all know that we, if you recall, we passed a resolution to support One Hundred, One Hundred Percent Community. And so I hope to see us all out there, and, uh, getting the word out to the community to, to kickstart this, this endeavor. Uh, we definitely, for those that don't know what that, that's all about, I'm just gonna quickly tell you, it's, uh, to ensure well-resourced communities where everyone can thrive, and all the way from housing to food, uh, transportation, and, uh, many various others. If you really, um, would like to, uh, check out the website, um, please go to One Hundred Percent, what is it? Uh, just One Hundred Percent Community?
One Hundred and, um.
Oh, onehundrednm.org. Uh, but this is gonna be the kickoff, yes. From eleven to, uh, two o'clock at Tuesday morning, or eleven to one. Okay, so just wanna invite you all. And as we proceed, uh, if anything changes, we'll let you know. Anyone, do you wanna add anything to it?
Um, no, I just had a quick announcement to add on to that, but thank you for the reminder for that.
I'm sorry, where, where is this event?
Tuesday morning, parking lot.
Which parking?
Tuesday morning.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
It's that wall there, that, where the mural will be. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick announcement, announcement, tomorrow afternoon, I'm gonna head up to the Denver area for the N A C O, the National Association of Counties Conference. Be there till Sunday. Um, I did get named to the Environment, Energy, and Land Use, uh, Sub-Stirring Committee, so should be interesting. I'll come back and let you know, like.
Great, thank you.
What this is like. I know, like, you all have experience with, with N A C O much more than I do, but I'm happy to give a report back. And just a quick heads up, um, August third to the thirteenth, I will be out of the country for a family wedding. I will stay in touch as much as possible, but there might be delays.
And then, of course, we have the fiesta. So let's, uh, let's attend if we can, those that want to, of course, but, uh. Que viva las fiestas, right? And so, uh, watch for the guide. Certainly, on behalf of the, the county, I had the honor of, of welcoming those. So, um, let's, let's enjoy. Great. I don't, is there anything else, Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Uh, adjournments?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
And if I'm in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Agreement, thank you. Thank you all that attended the meeting. We appreciate you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.